Mayor and Council, we have with us this evening Reverend Joseph Cobus from First United Methodist Church of Sherrill. He is a newcomer to Sherrill, so we welcome him.
Friends, let us open our hearts to God tonight in prayer. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, you sent your Son, Jesus Christ, among us to proclaim the kingdom of God as among us in our cities, towns, and villages, and lonely places. Behold in visit we pray, our community of Sherrill South Carolina. Renew the bonds of charity that uphold our civil life. Send upon us and equip us to be honest and able leaders for your community. Deliver us from poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with mercy for all. And at the last, bring us to your holy city, the new Jerusalem, where we shall know perfect guarantee and peace for Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you, one God, now and forever and ever. Amen.
You would stand for the plate?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up on our agenda, we have approval of amendments for July 8, 2025 town meeting, town council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Does anyone have a second? Any discussion on that? All those in favor of approval of amendments for July 8, 2025 town council meeting, say aye. Any opposed? That motion is approved. Next is our July 2025 financial report. Do you want to have a motion to approve the financial report? Have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of the July 2025 financial report, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, next up at this time, we have comments from Ms. Anne Hyler. On Sherrill being a tree city. Come on, Ms. Anne.
My name's Anne Hyler. I work for the South Carolina Forest Street Commission. I'm one of the few urban foresters out there, so I'm not doing any timberwork. So I'm just here to help cities manage their city trees. So, and I'm here to award the Tree City USA to Sherrill. Forty-five years as a tree city. And we've already had the discussion with Mr. Crawford and Brock Wolf that Sherrill was the first city in South Carolina to be a tree city. It was just unfortunate that a couple of years were lost in between. Columbia has now purchased their position with forty-six years. So, we are going to work together, Mr. Wolf and I, to keep Tree City going for as long as we can. And I know I'm saying that, and I know Mr. Wolf is leaving. So this is where I would just like to have a photo opportunity with city council. That would...
Yeah, hold the banner. Go over there.
Yeah.
One, two, three.
Yep, yep. Hang on, hang on.
One, two, three. Gotcha.
Gotcha. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne, for those comments. Next up, we have a petition for Chester County Farms to consider annexation of property into forfeit limits of the town of Sherrill versus a petition. Yes, from both.
So I have a... My name's Nicole. I have a petition. I work for Chester County Farms. We have a small piece of property that joins the truck route over here. And it already has a town water tap, but we want to petition to annex it into the town limits. From my understanding of the property, it is contingent, like it joins the town limits already on the truck route. But I have the petition, and if you have questions.
Any questions for the council?
So is this something that you record from originally?
It's a large farm.
It's a large farm, but this piece that we're wanting to annex has its own parcel number, and it's on the truck route side of the road that drives.
Nicole, what are you currently doing for water and sewer now, Dave?
Well, we have a lot of wells, but this track has about...
Okay, so the other areas would be well-washed, okay.
Did you have cattle in the hole?
On the back piece, we did.
It's part of Rock Rock?
It was Rock Rock, yes. I'll tell you, the ultimate goal, this is long-depe... You want to put an ice machine on this piece right down at the truck route. I don't know if that's going to... That's the long-term goal of that for the town.
This is the road that goes out from that?
Yeah, yes, yeah. It would be on your left after you have the railroad drive. Nicole, when you say ice machines, like a vendor thing, like a selling ice?
So one is very similar to the one that's right in front of Sherrill Elementary School.
Okay, yeah, okay. So it would be a setup like that?
Yes. That's the long-term goal.
I got you, okay, yeah. Any other questions from council?
It looks complete, so you guys can take another consideration.
Yeah, okay, Nicole, we'll take another consideration. Thank you for your time. Yes, sir. Okay. All right, next up on our agenda, we have comments from Ms. Wester Graham on water sewer rates. Ms. Wester?
Good evening. I'm before you as a local pastor and a concerned citizen, and I want to address you all. And I know you all are tired of perhaps hearing about this, but it's... You're going to just get used to it, because they're going to keep going. And they complain to me when I work out, and there's only a couple of places to shop, so I'm all around. I do Sherrill Community News on Facebook, so people contact me directly. On July 27th, I wrote on my page, "Citizens are fed up with soaring water bills and soaring, no soaring tasting water or improved services." I repeat, citizens are fed up with soaring water bills and no soaring tasting water or improved services. In other words, why are our water bills higher than our electric bills in some cases? And I tossed mine before I realized I should have brought it, but I do have it. I also have a bank statement from West Far Road. Mine's a neck and neck and are higher. So I'm in this category too with the persons that contact me. And then I said, "Sherrill Community News." I said, "Contact your town council member and voice your concerns. Additionally, attend the meetings on first Tuesdays at 5:30 PM fed up." The first person that contacted me, I had her to contact Ms. Amy Gather, because I knew her, her name, of course, and her grandmother caught me in high school. And I know her mother as well, so I said, "Contact her." She was very concerned. She will listen. The mayor and all of them will listen, but we need some action. We... I mean, the water bills are ridiculous. And you all know the water is horrible. We don't drink it. By the way, we don't drink it. We go to Bishopville and get our water. We also go up I-26 to what's called the Hillin' Water. Those are the Hillin' Waters. I'm a perfect example of healing of spring water. I was diagnosed with ulcerated colitis some forty years ago. And guess what? I'm healed as of ten years ago, when they say there is no cure. But I declare a holistic approach in spring water and water in Jesus Christ. Now, these people, I saved some of the comments, and I will go back, and I can show them to you all. But I teach budget the first quarter of every year. I don't know if other pastors do that, teach finance any time of the year. You're nodding? I guess that means yes. So we say budget. Now, I'm getting complaints, people can't do a budget. And you all know that because you do a budget. Hello, I retired from the school business. And I write, "Coach Burd." You see, Coach, this man retired from Chester County Farms. We have to do a budget. Twenty-five dollars, thirty dollars here, thirty there, thirty, 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 juggling what to pay. I have members of my church that juggle their bills. Now, what I would like to see is stop the madness. Stop with these increases. Mr. Harvey Johnson, wonderful man. I spoke to him, plus he's in a lot of my members' area as well. Thank you so much for seeing, and the mayor, the board, for seeing that the streets were paved. All right. In the Gotham Street area, but Don Coker Rayfield, she said, "I agree. What happened to the $2.5 million that should have been spent on our water, but instead you all chose pick-a-box? So you chose a want over necessity. My prayer every day, I said, "Thank you, Lord, for supplying all of my needs and most of my wants." You all did the wrong thing. I call it like it is.
Ms. Brown, I'm sorry, the time's up.
You never told me what my time was.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay, all right. Well, I'll send the letter in, and this has got to stop. As a landlord, I paid eighty-five dollars. You know how many gallons of water I use? None. Eighty-five dollars. I had the water turned on just to see if the pipes were leaking. And guess what? I paid eighty-five dollars to the contractor. Actually, thank you, Ms. Lynn. Yes, sir. The madness needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wester. Okay, next up on our agenda, we have citizen comments. If anyone in attendance with citizen comments. Come on, Ms. Wolf.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I have a few concerns. First, I want to say thank you to the town council for the Mainet Street, Jericho Street, Gondry Street, East Green, and the little street that curves around there. I can't remember that name, but for the paving. It was something that was much needed, and we'd like to thank you all for doing that. I was a little girl the first time that Mainet Street was paved. And so this is some type of remembrance of what was needed over there in that area. The only thing I wanted to ask was if anybody's going to be responsible for scraping the sides of the street where the dirt was pushed back and often had to do the paving, but it's still mounds of dirt. They did the white lines, but they not cleared the debris that's on the sides of the street. I also wanted to get, to talk to someone about the overgrown properties over there. Some of them have been sprayed to get rid of the kudzu. And so who's going to go back and make sure that it has been taken down? It looks really bad with all of the dead now foliage in the area, and that needs to be taken down. We want Mainet, we want that area over there to look just as good as Third Street and Market Street and Kershaw. There are some nice families over there that deserve, that they live in good-looking neighborhoods. I'm still asking when will Mainet Street open up back to Ward Second Street? I did talk to Rob about it one day, and he gave me an answer. But if there's anything that we as proprietarians over there can do to get that to, you know, if we have to talk to DOT, whatever it is we need to do to get that opened back up, it's very much needed. And there are some overgrown properties over there. They have not been addressed for several years. I won't call names, but you may know who I'm talking about. And though, we need to make sure that everybody gets the lift. We need to make sure that everybody is told that their properties need to be cleaned up. We don't mind the deer, but we do, we are afraid of snakes and big spiders and all that kind of stuff. And one last thing, the end of Jersey Street at State Road and the entrance to the bus line at Long Middle School, the puddles are really big. There's no drainage there, so that needs to be taken care of. And if we can get some answers to those questions, I'll make sure you get a copy of what I presented. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf.
Thank you.
Listen, ma'am, pardon me, please. One of my church members was in a bad accident, and I would call the hospital.
Mr. JT?
Good afternoon. I apologize. I meant to try to get on the agenda, but I missed the deadline. I just got a suggestion that I wanted to bring forth. I hope y'all will hear me out and think about it and consider it. I got three individuals that... I grew up through the recreation system, late eighties through the nineties, and I know the kids after me came in contact with these three individuals. And I was just wondering if there was something that we could do to honor, maybe a bench for each one or something that Eric had, Tim Adams, Olin McCastle, and Mr. Barry Davis. Those three individuals gave years, years of working with kids and giving back to kids, and they're no longer here with us. So I was just thinking that it would be nice if the town done something to honor those three people who gave back so much of their time to help the youth and to help the community. So I hope that y'all will consider that. I don't know how the funding is, but I'm sure there's some money somewhere to where something could be done like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Appreciate that suggestion. Okay, any other comments? Okay, next line item is our number nine, our second reading of ordinance, ordinance 2026-03, an ordinance amending the business license ordinance of the town of Sherrill to update the class schedule as required by Act 176 of 2020. Rob?
Like I mentioned in the last town council meeting, this is something that's required by the state of South Carolina. Again, you may recall, we did this earlier in the year, but the municipal association wanted the exhibit A actually attached to the ordinance instead of this just a separate attachment on the website. So we're just redoing it, so comply with that.
Do I have a motion for an ordinance 2026-03? I believe it's approved. Okay, have a second? Second. Any discussion, council? Off a look, all those in favor of ordinance 2026-03, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Next up is our first reading of ordinance, ordinance 2026-04, an ordinance to amend the town of Sherrill's official zoning map to rezone partial 271-009-006-039 from NC Neighborhood Commercial to GC General Commercial. Rob?
This is a recommendation from the Joint City-County Planning Commission. This is a piece of property located on the corner of, or just by the corner of Second and Post Street. It's a vacant lot next to the car lot there, and the owner is seeking a resanding. We will have a public hearing on this at the next town council meeting, and we're going through the process right now of notifying the adjacent property owners. But the intent is to push the little car lot on the corner there into some of that vacant space right there. So in order to do that, we have to reschedule.
All right, I have a motion to approve ordinance 2026-04. Have a second? Second. Any discussion on that, council? Okay, all those in favor of motion for ordinance 2026-04, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Next up being ordinance 2026-05. It's an ordinance authorizing the town manager to sell certain properties owned by the town of Sherrill being approximately 7.82 acres designated as cap max, numbers 271-009-010-005, and 271-009-010-07 to circle K stores and to execute all necessary documents related to said sale and other matters related thereto. Rob?
This is the property on the corner of, excuse me, Front Street and Post Street, collectively what we call the Lawn Maker Property and the warehouse over there. The proposed sale price for the site was $1.874 million, and it had an appraisal price of $1.823 million. So we are getting above market value for the property without having to do any demolition work that would give it that market value price. My hope with the sale of this property is that we take a piece of property that's been an eyesore coming into town and see it redeveloped into something nice that will generate a strong tax revenue. Just kind of looking at other facilities in South Carolina, I estimate that a circle K there could generate anywhere between $50,000 to $70,000 in revenue annually. Plus, we would get to remove the upkeep of that property from our annual budget. So we had about anywhere from $8,400,000 a year in black for the town of Sherrill. On top of that, my hope is, and I know we discussed this with council some as well, is that the sale of this property, the funds can be reinvested back into the community, particularly our recreation facilities to give back to the community. So I think it's a good thing to redevelop a underutilized piece of property, explore a fair price, and it will have long-term benefits for the community as well.
Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2026-05? Have a second? Okay, any discussion or question on that? I do have one, Rob. What is the approximate number of employees that they will have?
Any idea of what that would be?
I won't quote you that number, but...
I did ask that the last time I spoke with them, and I believe it's going to be around fifteen to twenty-five employees. And it's an average wage of around fifteen, sixteen, seventeen dollars an hour, plus management as well, which would be higher.
So I have a motion. So all those in favor of the motion to approve ordinance 2026-05, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, next up on the agenda, number eleven, is a resolution, a resolution 0220... I mean, 2026, a resolution committing matching funds to a 2025 state historic preservation grant fund application. Rob?
If you look across the street here, you'll notice that Market Hall, which is a building we own and are responsible for the maintenance of, starting to show some signs of deterioration. We've applied for this grant for the last two years in order to try to stabilize the exterior of the structure. It is an important historic structure. Not only does it add to the town green, but it has important associations with the history of the town, the history of the African-American community, and the history of the town government as well, having multiple uses, including being the police department and the recreation department at one time. This grant fund is kind of new to the state. We do have to provide a matching funds. In this case, we would be looking at providing matching funds of $75,000 to a $150,000 application for a total grant project of $225,000. This resolution calls for the matching funds to come out of either hospitality or local accommodation taxes, which are tourism funds collectively. It must be used for tourism purposes. This is a qualifying tourist project, as it is located in the historic area of downtown.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution 0220-26? Have a second? Okay, all those in favor of approval of motion for resolution 02-2026, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up in the resolution is resolution 03-2026, a resolution authorizing the town manager enter into a contract with Talbot Bright and Ellington for engineering services related to the Sherrill Pennisable Airport. Rob?
Talbot Bright and Ellington is our airport engineer. We have a capital improvement plan in place at the airport, and the vast majority of it is funded by the FAA and also the South Carolina Aviation Commission. Combine those two agencies, provide 97.5% of the cost of all our projects going on out of the airport. We budget for this capital improvement plan each year to provide the matching funds. So in this case, this is an authorization for TBE to perform construction-related engineering work as we seek to update and replace the lighting system out of the airport. The total, total cost of the authorization is $284,000, which again, we're responsible for 2.5% of. We did have an independent B estimate done on this project, and the estimated cost of engineering services was $385,000. So as well, the budget high-line of the FAA, and like I said, it's already budgeted for, and this is just authorization decided.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution 03-2026? Have a second? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of motion to approve resolution 03-2026, say aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, next up, we have approval of purchase of interview equipment for the Sherrill Police Department. Rob?
So in the fiscal year '26 budget, the Sherrill Police Department had requested funding to replace faulty and very old interview equipment in their interrogation room. It needed to be updated. It was even going back so far as to use VHS tapes for some of it. After reviewing options, we did remove this from the fiscal year '26 budget, and instead talked to the police department about using our police seizure fund to purchase this equipment. This is essentially a compliant system that works, or excuse me, it's compliant with court requirements, evidence requirements through the solicitor's office and through the court system. And it's a hardwired system that does audio and video recording and allows our officers to watch the interrogations from above the room as well. So it's $12,960. We have about $22,000 in the police seizure fund, so this would come out of that.
All right, do I have a motion of approval of purchase of interview equipment for the Sherrill PD? Have a second? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of motion for the approval of the purchase of interview equipment, Sherrill PD, say aye. Any opposed? That motion is approved. Okay, next up, we have approval of MOA with South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice. Rob?
This is a MOA with the South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice. We're required, if we have a juvenile offender, that they have to go to a SCD-JJ-approved facility. Typically, I just renew this automatically this year, but this year, the price did change. In addition, $50 a day to house an offender, and they're adding... In addition, with fifty dollars a day to house an offender, they're adding a hundred and twenty-five dollar a day capital improvement charge. And since it did constitute a change in price, I felt the council needed to vote on it. This really won't impact the budget. I did speak with the police department, and they said it knows we send maybe one or two people a year to SCD JJ. So it's not something we do, but we have to have this in place in case we do need to do that.
We have a motion for approval, MOA with the South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice.
No.
Have a second.
No.
Okay. Any discussion?
I need to ask a question. What, what did you say was the actual per day cost for a car like...
Fifty dollars. Fifty dollars.
You could analyze the cost of rides?
So it's, the, the official cost per day is still going to be fifty dollars, but they're adding a one hundred and twenty-five dollar a day surcharge for capital improvements to the facility.
So that, that one twenty-five is on top of the fifty?
Yes. So it'd be a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I have one question. When we do send someone there, how long are they typically there?
I'd like to call Jack Henderson to maybe answer that question.
Jack, Mr. Jack, you got, you want to step up and just give us a brief thing on how long they've been on this day? I know it probably would be...
Give me your question. My name is Captain James Henderson. Normally, they're there from, if they go in on a Wednesday, they normally have their first hearing probably by Friday, so we're looking at three to maybe four days.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Okay. I have a motion for approval of MOA with the South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Next up, we have a request for funds to prepare a market, the Carolina Center Industrial Park Spec Building for sale. Rob.
So the Carolina Industrial Park Commission, Carolina Center Industrial Park Commission met a few weeks ago. We are trying to get that spec building and that industrial site back on the market for potential companies to invest in. The industrial park is jointly owned by the town of Charole, the town of Chesterfield, and Chesterfield County. And the commission did vote to prepare the spec building for sale, which would include placing the site in the Duke Energy Readiness Program. And that's a program that says, hey, this site is ready to be invested in. And also cleaning the exterior of the building. If you've driven by it, it's got some, you know, growth on it and vines and stuff. So we just want to clean it up and get it, get it looking right for, for marketing. The total cost for all three, between all three entities is a little over seventy-eight hundred dollars. Our portion is two thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. So I'm requesting the council approve these funds to get the building ready for sale.
Okay. We have a motion to approve a request for funds to prepare for the market, to market the Carolina Center Industrial Spec Building. Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the funds for, to prepare market, to market the Carolina Center Industrial Spec Building, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, next up is for council information, activity reports. All those who are listed there, council, if you have any questions, speak now or later on that. Next up on our agenda is, is a exec, a session, request to enter into executive section, a session pursuant to section thirty dash four dash seventy of the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act to discuss the appointment of a town manager. I have a motion for...
No.
Have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to go into executive session or to discuss the appointment of town manager, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this time we're in executive session. Okay. Okay, do you all have a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor to come out of executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're out of the second session. Out of executive session, do you all have a motion coming from executive session?
Second.
You have a motion, yes.
You have a motion, a motion to, uh, open up applications for our new town manager.
Okay. You got a motion on the floor to open up application for town, the new town manager, have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of a motion to, uh, open up our, uh, town manager, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Any other motions?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Brian Rogers Assistant Town Manager effective September twelfth at five P M.
Second.
Have a second?
Yeah.
Give me.
What, assistant?
Yeah, I'm assistant.
Oh, I'm assistant, I'm sorry.
Hey, I'll let you restate it.
I'll restate it. I make a motion to appoint Brian Rogers Interim Town Manager September twelfth at five P M.
Second.
Second?
Yes.
Any discussion? Okay, have a motion on the floor to, uh, uh, make Brian Rogers Interim Manager September the twelfth at five P M. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up, I'll take the motion for adjournment.
I make a motion for adjournment.
Have a second?
Second.
I don't think we'll have any discussion, we are adjourned.